Okay, we're, uh, we came out of executive meeting. We'll have to come out of the executive session.
No, no action.
There's no action taken at this point. So now we'll move into the, uh, our reorganization. All right. I want to make sure I got page one. Page two. Okay. There you go. All right. The first item would be requesting the Board appoint Ralph Spindalary as President of John County Board of Commissioners for 2014. I would ask for that motion.
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Swery.
Aye.
Mr. Smitty.
Aye. Motion stands approved. The next one, the Commissioner's Office requesting the Board appoint Blake Reer as Vice President of the John County Board of Commissioners for 2014.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Spilary.
Aye.
Mr. Smitty.
Aye. Motion stands approved. Okay. Following the Commissioner's Office requesting the Board adopt the John County Commissioner meeting schedule for 2014. Okay. Sessions will be held in the John County Commissioners Chamber, alternate location as necessary, with legally required notice of change of location provided. They will be every Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. and the third Thursday of each month at 10:00 a.m.
Now, I put that in there because you'd ask for one Thursday, and I put, I put it in the third Thursday because we need to meet this Thursday.
Yeah.
So you could either do that, or if you didn't, you know, for some reason the Board didn't want to do that, or that particular Thursday, then we want to have this schedule go into effect as of February 1st or next week.
I think it might be a good idea, just for temporary at least, to, you know, build up the meeting dates so that we, you know, a lot of us go to different conventions and things, and I don't want anyone to get hurt by not having enough meetings. What do you think?
Well, is there any, uh, I understand this meeting coming up, but the way it's set up here, we're going to have a meeting on the third Thursday and then a meeting on the fourth Thursday.
Or make it the second.
At different times.
Yeah. Or have it at the second Thursday.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that two in a row.
How about the second?
Wouldn't it make more sense, with the exception of this one?
Yeah.
Make it the second Thursday and then make this effective.
Yeah.
Second and fourth.
Yeah.
Make this effective February 1st.
Okay. So it would be the second Thursday of each month at 10:00 a.m. And then the fourth Thursday of each month would be at 6:30. And then, um, should I go right down through that? Okay, so let's vote on those four.
You want to make this effective February 1st?
Yes, I think that would be good, making, what do you think, gentlemen?
Yeah, because we're, we're not going to have one on the 23rd. That Thursday, we're already out.
Right, the next week, nothing.
And then I think, aren't we on, in the first?
And then the fourth, and then the fourth week, we would at least have the 6:30 meeting, the first one, right? The last?
Yeah, like Ralph suggested, it just seems odd to me that we have, you know, a Thursday and then the next Thursday, and then we wait two or three Thursdays, depending if you've got a five Thursday month. Uh, that it would be more practical to have them spaced a little further apart, but that's a, a hunch. I don't know.
I think that it could be, my, my only thing is, I was looking at the calendar, actually, and we're looking at, we have, we would have sixty, we would have sixty-four, sixty-four meetings a year if we did the Tuesdays and the one Thursday. So you would be able to actually, there'd be fourteen meetings that you could miss a year to be within the guidelines of, because you have fifty-two weeks, and then you had to have an additional twelve Thursdays, so it's sixty-four. I think it could kind of confuse things a little bit as far as for some of the departments, because if we were to, I, I think what, if we need to call another meeting, then we could just go ahead and file, follow what's required under ORC for a public meeting. But I think that if we left it the way we did with just, everybody will know, all of the department heads would know, that on Tuesdays, we have our 10 o'clock, and the third Thursday, or the fourth Thursday is 6:30, because that, that, that other Thursday could kind of, you know, bugger things up a little bit, but, um, you know, and if we needed to have a special meeting, I'm sure that none, nobody's opposed to putting that together, but, um, I just looked at if, you know, with fourteen meeting buffer, that's, that's quite a bit.
I think we've already missed.
Four out of the box.
Four this month.
Right out of the box.
Because of the holidays and so on.
Yeah, and that's kind of a different month with the, with the Board stuff that we do down in Columbus and stuff, but, I don't know, I mean.
Maybe, why don't we try it for, you know, a few months?
Yeah, either way we do it, if we schedule it, we can cancel it.
We can cancel it.
If we don't schedule it, we have to put it.
Right.
That's fine.
We have to put it in.
Kind of build it up so we, first half of the year.
I would think from a, from a clerical standpoint and staying on top of things.
Yeah.
It would be easier to schedule the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, and then...
Cancel if not needed.
Canceling is less, because we don't have to put it in the paper twenty-four, we don't have to do that, so I, I, I just think.
So leave the second and the fourth, and then...
Yeah, we want to make less work for ourselves.
Okay.
For Debbie, or Christie, or whoever has to do all the paperwork.
So let's take a motion on those four to start.
And you agree with the February 1st effective, because that would mean we wouldn't have a Thursday night meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Start with the February 1st.
Yep, that's where.
Yeah, I, I...
Starting February 1, 2014. That would be the two, one, right?
Correct, yeah.
Want you to just, you want to go through the rest of these?
Well, let's just get this out of the way so we have that solidified, I, I think. Let's make a motion for that.
I, so moved on the first four.
Second?
Mr. Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Spilary.
Aye.
Mr. Smitty.
Aye. Motion stands approved. Now, we're going to go through the rest, and the next one, I'm going to do this for a while, and then I'm going to let you take it. I'm sitting there talking. Okay, the Board have additional meeting as as required, the time and place designated. Six would be any meeting called by the John County Office Hovers, Department's Head, the County Administrator, or the County Legal Counsel. Any meetings of the John County Township Trustees and Clerk Association. Any meetings of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, CCAO. Any regular or special meetings of the following Boards of Councils, at which quorum of the Board of County Commission is or may be present. You can take it from here, starting with A.
A, any township, Board of Trustees, meeting in City and Village Council. B, Joga County Board of Mental Health.
Of Health.
Of Health, yeah. Joga County Health Advisory Council. Joga Trumbull Solid Waste Management District. Joga Soil and Water Conservation District Meetings. Planning Commission. Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, NAWACA. Workforce Development. Joga Eschvila Portage Partnership, GAAP.
They got a new name. It's NOCOG. NOCOG.
What is it?
N-O-C-C-O-G. Northeast Ohio Council, Council of Governments.
N-O-C-C-G.
So much easier than GAAP.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, meetings. Portage, Joga Juvenile Detention Center Joint Board Investment Advisory Committee. Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC. District Seven Integrating Committee, Issue One. Joga County Agricultural Society, Fair Board Meetings. Chagrin River Watershed Partners, meetings to honor any invitations received by the Joga County Commissioners to attend groundbreakings, openings, celebrations, memorial services, and/or parades. Meetings with any organization or other political entities to discuss items of mutual concern. The time, place, and purpose of all special meetings, in addition to regularly scheduled meetings, will be given at least twenty-four hours in advance of such meetings to the news media, that having requested notification, except in the event of an emergency, requiring immediate official action. In the event of an emergency, the Board member or Board members calling the meeting shall notify the news media that have requested notification immediately of the time, place, and purpose of the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a mo, do we need a motion to approve that part?
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Okay. The next item is approve the appointments of members of the Board of County Commissioner to Boards and Committees for 2014 as following. Go through those.
Board President, Ralph Spindalary. Vice President, Blake Reer. ADP Board, Primary, can I just say the last names?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Do you want one of us to read it? Are you getting winded here?
I'm fine.
Okay.
ADP Board, Primary, Spindalary, Alternates Meeting. Board of Revision, Primary, Spindalary, Alternate, Reer. Chagrin River Watershed Partners, all three Commissioners. Community Corrections, Spindalary, Primary. Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, all three Commissioners. Cooperative Extension Advisory Board, Spindalary, Reer. Courthouse Security Advisory Committee, Spindalary, Reer. Family First, Reer, Spindalary. Farmland Preservation Committee, Farmland Preservation Committee.
Two Commissioners.
Two Commissioners, Spindalary and Reer. Financial Review and Report Committee, FRRC, Spindalary, Reer. NOCOG, formerly GAAP, Samidi, Reer. Joga County Agricultural Society, Upper Commissioners. Joga Growth Partnership, Samidi and Spindalary. Joga Trumbull Solid Waste Policy, Spindalary. Joga Trumbull Solid Waste Board Directors, all three Commissioners. Health District Advisory Board, Spindalary, Reer. Hospitalization Committee, Spindalary, Reer. Investment Advisory Committee, two Commissioners, Spindalary, Samidi. Microfilming Board, Reer, Samidi. NAWACA, Spindalary, and he's, and the alternate is Skip Claypool, Skip Clay, Claypool. And then for Commissioner Reer is Joe Cattell, and for Commissioner Samidi is still to be determined.
Yeah, I'm not going to have an alternate unless I need one, and if I do, it'll be Joe, or I'd ask one of my Commissioners to do it. If that would be all right with the folks.
Sounds good.
Okay, continue.
Planning Commission Board, all three Commissioners. Portage, Joga Juvenile Detention Center, all three Commissioners. Records Commission, Spindalary, Reer. Revolving Loan and Local Revolving Loan, Samidi and Reer. Stormwater Task Force, Spindalary and Reer. Tax Incentive Review Board and CRA Reinvestment, Samidi and Reer. Wetland Mitigation Bank Subcommittee, Reer, Spindalary. Board President Requesting.
Okay, well, why don't we make a motion on that?
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Motion stands approved. Okay, the next item, the Commissioner's Office requesting the Board appoint David Lehrer, County Administrator. Is requesting the Board appoint Christine Blair as Clerk to Commissioners, number 1306. And I, I'd make a motion to, I would like a motion for those two at this point.
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Motion stands approved.
Thank you very much.
Next, one more year of, of joy and, and rapture, right? Okay. The Commissioner's Office requesting the Board list the following personnel exemptions with the Ohio Department Administrative Services and Compliance with Section 124.11. A, nine of them, Ohio Revised Code, David Lehrer, County Administrator, and Christine Blair, Commissioner Clerk. The Commissioner's Office is also requesting the Board approve the following staff appointments. Position, Chief Building Enforcement Official, Michael Mahalson. Director of Department on Aging, Jessica Bolt. Director of Community and Economic Development and Fair Housing, Anita Stockard. Director of Department of Emergency Services, Dale Wedge. Director of Job and Family Services, George Tim Taylor. Director of Maintenance, Glenn Vernick. Director of Transportation, Christina Ryder. Director of Water Resources and Sanitary Engineer, Douglas Bowen. County Home Superintendent, Karen DiCola. Dog Warden, Matt Granito. Director of Archives and Record Center, Linda Barhany. Director, oh, Drainage Engineer, sorry, Joe Cattell. And APRS, Richard Manley. I make motion to accept, I need a motion to accept that.
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Motion stands approved. We're more, we're getting through this, there's only ten more pages. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board acknowledge the following Department Head reappointment placed in unclassified service in pursuit to ORC 12412, and who are provided unclasses service, explanation, and acknowledgement form. Whoa, that's a lot of them. Mike Mahalson, Jessica Bolt, Anita Stockard, Dale Wedge, George Tim Taylor, Glenn Vernick, Christina Ryder, Douglas Bowen, Karen DiCola, Matt Granito, and Linda Barhany. The Commissioner's Office is also requesting the Board approve the Joga County Board of Commissioners organizational chart. The Commissioners is requesting the Board approve and execute 2014 Ohio Department of A appointment for County APRR Inspector Form for Richard Manley, appointed January 13th, 2014, at an hourly rate of 1125 and a mileage reimbursement rate of .56 cents.
Taking action there.
They can take an action on that?
Yeah. Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Motion stands approved. But we did this, sorry. Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve the appointments of the following alternates for Joga County Board of Commissioners for the NAWACA Governing Board, pending ratification of the NAWACA Board of Amendment, Article 4, 42, adopted by Joga County, January 7, 2014. Commissioner Spindalary, Skip Claypool, Commissioner Reer, Joe Cattell, and myself. Commissioners, Samidi, to be honest. Uh, the Commissioner's Off, okay. The Commissioner's Office requesting the Board set the compensation for the Drainage Engineer, Joe Cattell, at a weekly rate of 34682, effective with pay two.
Biweekly rate.
At biweekly rate?
That's what it says online.
Yeah, did I say weekly? I'm sorry. The Commissioner's Office requesting the Board appoint Gerald Gerard Morgan to serve as prevailing wage coordinator for Joga County for 2014. The Commissioner's Office requesting the Board appoint Frank Antonucci to serve as a prevailing wage coordinator for Joga County for 2014.
Why don't you stop there?
Yeah, motion to, uh...
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Yes. Okay. The Department of Emergency Services requesting the Board appoint the following members to the DES Terrorism Mitigation and Planning Group for a one-year term, expiring December 31st, 2014. Scott Hildebrand, Fire Service, Primary, Hamden Fire Department. John Fraser, Fire Service, Alternate, Russell Fire Department. Larry Gaspar, a medical, Emergency Medical Primary, Chardon Fire Department. Mark S. Lynn, Emergency Medical Alternate, Munson Fire Department. Mark Purchase, Police Department, Chester Police. Dan McClellan, Sheriff's Office. Dale Wedge, Emergency Management, Primary. Ken Folsom, Emergency Manager, Alternate. Doug Bowen, Public Works, Water Resource, Sources. Bob Weisdeck, Public Health, Health Commissioner. James DeVorak, Township Trustee, Burton Township. Randall Sharp, Mayor's Office, Chardon City Manager. David Lehrer, Commissioners Office. Can I have a motion on that?
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Motion stands approved. Okay, the next one's kind of like, the Department on Aging is requesting the Board reappoint the following members to the 2014 Aging Advisory for a two-year term, expiring December 31st, 2016. Tom Lehrer Senior, Pat Kraniger, Richard Perrano, Deborah Duick.
Duick.
Duick?
Duick.
May Blaine?
Sister Deb.
Oh, Deb. Colleen Lockhart, Diane Ryder, Sally Huntsberger, Bill O'Donnell. Uh, the next one, Department of Job and Family Services requesting the Board reappoint the following members to Family Services Planning Committee for a one-year term, January 1 through December 31st, 2014. Nan Burr, Christine Gibbons, Matt Gilemo, Mark Clark, Jim Adams, Nancy Seelbach, David Lehrer, Ruth Carlton. Sandy Bor Coleman, Sally Bell, Christine Stagerwald, and Dr. Kevin Shartran. I'm just going to go to the end of this page, and then we'll make a motion. Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board appoint the following members to the Fair Housing Committee for a two-year term, January 1, 2014 through December 31st, 2015. Derek Adams, Alfred Thompson, Kim Sutter, Suzanne Fisher, Lucinda Sharp Gates. And then the next one, the Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board appoint the following members to the Revolving Loan Fund Committee for a two-year term, January 1, 2014 through December 31st, 2015. Mary Samidi, Deborah Mack, Andy Minehold. Goes on to page, here we go, four. Lois Danku, Caterina Coca Fulton, CIC appointee. Caroline Mansfield, Chris Hitchcock as an alternate. Dave Blanock, CIC appointee. I think I'll just do the next one, too. The Department of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board appoint the following members to the Local Revolving Loan Fund Committee for a two-year term, January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2015. Mary Samidi, Lois Danku, Caterina Coca Fulton, Dave Dietrich, Deborah Mack, Caroline Mansfield, Andy Minehold, Chris Hitchcock as alternate, Dave Blanock, CIC appointee. I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
Shall move.
Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spilary?
Aye.
Mr. Smitty?
Aye. Want to take these from here? Department of Job and Family Services.
Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board approve the addition of Jim Onspach to the Maintenance Department Home Depot Commercial Credit Card Account. Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve the use of credit cards for the 2014 year per month for the following. Aging VP Gas Card for $2,000, Giant Eagle Fleet Service $2,000, Giant Eagle PNC $2,000. Building Department, Wex Bank Gas Card, $250, or should that be $200? Not sure that that might be too...
For building?
Mike?
Mike, is $250 what you usually have on your credit card, or is it $2,500?
$250 a month.
A month.
Per month.
Per month.
That's Wex Bank. That's called Wex Bank.
It's the same credit card that the Sheriff's Office uses. I've never heard of it before, but we got it through them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had it right, because that's what was in there. Okay.
That's the name on it.
Wex.
Wex.
Not tax, wax.
Okay. The Commissioner's Office, Visa, $4,000. Community Development, Staples, $1,500. Visa, $1,500. County Home, Walmart, $700. And Tractor Supply, $700. Emergency Services, Home Depot, $1,000. And Giant Eagle, PNC, $1,000. Job and Family Services, Visa, $4,000. Maintenance, Home Depot. For Glenn Vernick, $5,000. Richard Newsome, $5,000. Bobby Anderson, $1,000. Jim Onspach, $1,000. Clifford Davis, $1,000. Andy Hunt, $1,000. Joe Muckix, $1,000. Brian Smith, $1,000. Mike Deverjack.
Deverjack.
Deverjack, $1,000. And Rick Warham, $1,000. Transit Department, Visa, $4,000. And Staples, $1,000.
Continue. Yeah, keep going.
Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve and authorize President of the Board to execute the application for authorization to permit the use of credit, county credit cards from personnel, Policy 7.11 Form, ORC 301.27, per month for the following. Aging. Joanna Brace, Kathy Hearts, Tom McCrew, Rudy Brewing, Bob DeBevitz. Kathy Petrella, Bobby Seagraves, Adam Van Boxel, David Craig, Mary Ann...
Mary Ann Deech.
Deech. Becky Samard.
Samard.
Samard. Dave Loco. I don't even know these people.
You will.
You're on here, too?
Sandy?
Sandy McLeod, Amber Weinhardt, Mary Ann Van Pelt, Karen Fugger.
Do you have that?
Dave Loco.
Can I interrupt you? Do you have that form? Because I don't see Jessica's name on here.
Let me see.
And I'm assuming she should be on here.
Uh, we don't, we're coming down a list. I don't see Jessica's sticker on there.
Well, see, you know, some of this was from last year, so we tried to edit it. I just want to make sure we...
Jessica Bolt. Let's put Jessica Bolt after Karen Fugger.
Yeah.
Here, Jessica Bolt.
Okay.
Did you say Karen Fugger?
Fugger.
Yes, I did.
Okay, and then Jessica Bolt.
Okay.
Looks like it starts with Loco.
Loco, yeah. Dave Loco, Sandy McLeod, Met, yeah. Amber Weinhardt, Mary Ann Van Pelt, Karen Fugger.
That's twice. Don't say that.
She gets used to twice, though.
That's for personal use.
Well, hey. Actually, there's a no.
I think we read off a different floor. On the maintenance template I have, she isn't on there twice. I think we're...
Well, on, on, actually, a lot of these people are.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, from, from, here, we just did Loco on the first page, and now we did Loco again.
Well, that... You may, we may have given out multiple copies of the same page.
Yeah, okay, so go on with Chris Onspach.
We'll, we'll edit this.
Well, if we say it twice, it's better than not saying it.
There's not two people with the same name. Know that.
We're trying.
Start with Beth.
This is not fun.
Looks like Beth Perko.
This is never an easy thing to do.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Debbie looks like Beth.
Where are we? Where, Beth Perko.
Beth Perko.
Okay. And then Chris Onspach, Karen Stone, Becky Samard.
Said them.
Kathy Petrella, Joanna Brace, Rudy Brewing, Kathy Hearts, Tom McCrew, Kathy Petrella.
Let me read some of these for a while, because I have them on my template here.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Okay, start with Building Department.
Building Department.
Excuse me, on, on this one, we'll correct it with the meetings, because we voted for everybody at least once. Some people twice.
I know, it sounds like...
But we only have to list it once when we—when we—for the official record.
You only get to use the card once. There's no personal and just—
Okay.
If anybody else wants their name on there, go ahead.
Let me read—it—
No.
Let me read for a while off, Mike.
Yeah, okay, Building Department.
Michael Mahalison. Dan Spada. Larry Hyden. Commissioners' Office. Blake Reer. Mary Samidi. Ralph Spillary. David Lehrer. Christine Blair. Heidi Delaney. Kathy Hostetler. Colleen Lockhart. Katie Shaw. Community Development. Anita Stockard. Kelly Belkones. Joni Stusick. County Home. Karen DiCola. Wendy Hallstrom. Cheryl Spencer. Barbara Warren. Karen—oh, there's the—
Karen DiCola.
There's it—okay.
That's her—her twin.
Yeah, and we had Karen and Wendy on this template twice. Okay. Emergency Services. Dale Wedge. Karen Folsom. Judy Overstar.
Ken.
Ken. Not Karen.
Not Karen.
Ken, I think I slowed it.
Sorry, Ken.
Judy Overstar. Tara Vargovich. I'll slow down. Job and Family Services. Tim Taylor. Paul Ryman. Mark Clark. Maintenance. Glenn Vernick. Richard Newsom. Bob Anderson. Jim Onspach. Clifford Davis. Andy Hunt. Joe Muckix. Brian Smith. Mike Deverjack. Rick Wareham. Transit Department. Christina Ryder. Jack Jackson. Michael Casper. Catherine Wood Waver. Phew. Want to do a motion on this one?
Okay, let's do a motion on that one.
So move.
Second.
Richard Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Smitty?
Aye. I'll do the first four, and then you can take it from there. Probate Juvenile Cards Requesting the Boards Approve the Application for Authorization for Use of Credit Cards Form ORC 30127 for the Juvenile Probate Card for Michelle Shoda, Julie Wees, Carla Karla Murray, Dave Lebecky, Kimberly Herman, Beery, Timothy Grandal, Janet Pentec, Charlotte Zimmerman, and Beth Williams. Probate Juvenile is requesting Board approve application for authorization to put the use of county credit cards Form 30127 for Casa, for Kids, for Christine Stagerwald, Charlene Wolf, Carolyn Squire, and Julie Wees. The Sheriff's Office requesting the Board approve the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards, same Form 30127 for the Sheriff's Office for Daniel C. McClellan, Scott A. Hildebrand, Gary M. Griffin, William S. Nijas, Kathy A. Rose, John Hiscox Jr., Christine Kennedy, and Nancy Farrell. The Court of Common Pleas is requesting the Board approve the application for authorization to put the use of county credit cards Form 30127 for the Common Pleas Court for Judge Forrest Burke, Judge David L. Fury, and Joanne E. Monaco. You can start with Bennett's.
Bennett's Office is requesting the Board approve the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards Form ORC .301.27 for the Veterans Service Commission for Michelle Pemberton, John Brickman, and Randy McFickers. Engineers' Office requesting the Board approve the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards for Form ORC .301.27 for the Engineers' Office for Home Depot, for Frank Antonucci, Michael Bender, Sean Carne, Joseph Cattell, Keith Delfts, Michael Donaldson, LeAnn Exum, Christie Philippi.
Philippi.
Philippi. Nicholas Gores, Robert Hagenbaugh, Shane Ha—
Hajar.
Haider. Robert Hank. Andrew Hopt. Nicholas Kovac. Paul Kucharzki Jr. Hugh Mason. Carl Matthews. Brian Phillips. Alan Prescott. Joseph Prosser. Peter Soliskar.
Soliskar.
Benjamin Schrock. Michael Stone. Trace Turnbull. Robert Vargo. And Scott Warner. The Engineers' Office requesting the Board approve the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards for the Engineers' Office for Visa, for Frank Antonucci, Michael Bender, Sean Carne, Joseph Cattell, Keith Delfts, Michael Donaldson, LeAnn Exum, Christie Philippi. Nicholas Gores. Shane Haider. Robert Hank. Andrew Hopt. Nicholas Kovac. Paul Kucharzki Jr. Stephen Markey. Hugh Mason. Carl Matthews. Brian Phillips. Alan Prescott. Joseph Prosser. Peter Soliskar. I forget.
He's good training.
Benjamin Schrock. Michael Stone. Tracy—Trace Turnbull. Robert Vargo. And Scott Warner.
I'll take it from there. The Engineers' Office requesting the Board approve the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards Form ORC 30127 for the Engineers' Office for Walmer. Frank Antonucci. Joseph Cattell. Michael Donaldson. Christie Philippi. Nicholas Gores. Robert Hagenbaugh. Shane Haider. Robert Hank. Andrew Hopt. Nicholas Kovac.